Okay, thank you and good evening and welcome to the June twelfth, two thousand and twenty-four meeting of the Wilmington School Committee. All members are in attendance with the exception of Mr. Golden, who was unable to join us this evening. Please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. First item of business is the announcement of our two thousand and twenty-three, two thousand and twenty-four retirees. Dr. Brand.
Thank you and good evening, everyone. Prior to the meeting, we had the opportunity to welcome and celebrate a number of Wilmington Public Schools staff that we will soon be preparing to say goodbye to and thank you for many years of service. Well, a little bit smaller number of total retirees this year than in recent years past. In total, we are saying goodbye and a huge thank you to those collectively of a hundred and sixty-nine years of service to the students and to our families and schools and programs in Wilmington. Very briefly, I'd just like to acknowledge and extend again our thanks to the following, who will be wrapping up their career with us this Friday. Gary McDonald from the Woburn Street, grade-three teacher. Michelle Hughes from the Wilmington Middle School, language-based special education teacher. Deborah Sigels, Shawshene Food Services. Deborah Williams from the Middle School, who's a language-based educational assistant. Anita Delulu, Western Intermediate and Instrumental Teacher. Teresa Furlong, Wilmington High School's school nurse. Edward Foster, Western Intermediate Principal. Susan Murray, Wilmington High School Administrative Assistant. And Christine Lacy, Wildwood Reading Specialist. So again, on behalf of our district administration, our school committee and our families, we want to extend our heartfelt thanks and congratulations to these folks who are preparing to move on to the next chapter of their lives. Thank you.
Thank you. I know a few of us had an opportunity to meet with a few of the retirees prior to the meeting and again, just extend our thanks and appreciation for their years of service and dedication to the town and our students. Okay. Excellent. Our next item of business is the Wilmington High School Senior Internships and Exploration, Excuse me, Projects and Presentations. I thank the few of you who are here to talk to us about your internship and/or project. First up, Julie Sutton. Hey, Julie. Thanks for being here.
Of course, thanks for having me. Okay. This is the poster that I made. I closed it on us. I'm gonna pass these around. You don't have to look at all of them, but just pass them around the circle. It's a little bit about kind of what, should I stand? The Department of Children and Families is what it's about.
You can sit if you're comfortable.
Okay, sure.
Whatever you would prefer.
Kind of how families get involved with DCF and what that looks like from their perspective, along with a guide for the foster parents or parents whose kids are in DCF's custody. So the Department of Children and Families stands for, DCF stands for the Department of Children and Families. And when somebody puts in a fifty-one A report, a report for abuse or neglect, they get, it gets sent to DCF and they kind of go out and investigate and see what's going on. And then a case is usually opened in which the social workers that are part of Massachusetts DCF go out and see kind of what's going on, offer services, and I was able to be a part of that. So in Miss Dunlap's class, Service Learning, oh my gosh, Service Learning, I was able to make, I was able to work with DCF and volunteer there in the winter this, during my senior year of high school. And I was able to make over two hundred bags, like goodie bags, for the kids on the road, thanks to the help of actually the Wilmington community. I posted on the community page and was like, hey, I'm doing this class and I wanna make goodie bags for foster kids who are going to like appointments or court hearings, that kind of thing, so that they can have like a little toy encouraging note and snack in the car. So I was able to assemble those bags while in Miss Dunlap's class and at home. And then, since it was really successful and the social workers were really hap- happy with the outcome, I was like, would it be okay if in the spring I came and made this an official internship? And they said, of course. So I've been hanging out at the Burlington DCF office where they're definitely busy. I was, I was able to learn a lot of information and serve them a little bit, the most, the most that I could. Some of the things that I did, there's no pictures really of what I did on here because you're not allowed to take pictures. But some of the things that I did were just office things, like making lists of foster homes, availability, stuff like that. And also more interactive things, like going to see the foster kids at home visits, listening in on phone calls between the social workers and parents and seeing kids at the office when they had a supervised visit. So I was able to see like a whole bunch of different types of social workers, like kinship social workers, adoption social workers, non-related social workers. I was able to learn kind of what everybody does from like the administration people who help make sure everything's running okay and help mail things out to the supervisors who supervise their social workers' caseloads. So I was able to learn a lot because, to be honest, like that fifty-one A packet that's in that thing that's gonna be passed around, like I didn't even know how families really get involved with DCF. But usually, that was like what really helped me understand it from the beginning. And then I was just able to help the most that I could. That's all I got. If anyone has any questions, ask away.
Thank you. Questions from the committee? Dr. Bryson?
I have like ten. No, I'm kidding. Awesome, thank you so much for sharing. I have a couple of questions. I'd love to know, so I understand why you chose DCF, but I guess is this something you plan on doing? Are you, I forget exactly what you were gonna study in college, but can you tell us a little bit how this is going to impact the work you do, after, obviously now that you've graduated from Wilmington?
Yeah, so I'm going to study social work. I'm gonna get my master's in five years at Merrimack. And I will, I, I plan on going back to DCF if they want me back. They said they would, but we'll see. But I enjoyed DCF. A lot of people, when you say that, they're like, oh, okay. But I enjoyed it a lot and it was really helpful to me. And the people made up a good community, a good community of workers because you really need to kind of work together there. So I would go back there and even if not, that experience was good, just kind of getting the hang of how much like social policy, like guidelines and like kind of book, like rules and regulations you have to follow, which would go into any social work job. But I think it gave me a good experience, even if I didn't end up at DCF, to kind of see what it was like to work with children who are in the state's custody. So I definitely plan on doing something either with children in social work, whether it be like play therapy, my own private practice, or go back to DCF, or both.
Or all of the above.
Yeah.
I'll let someone else, can I keep going? My other question was just a simple one, but how many of those goodie bags were you able to create?
It was over two hundred. I stopped counting at the end because there was like so many donations that I, like legit, the class was over, I was like Miss Dunlap. I know that, I'm like, I'm like hoarding all of this stuff in my house. I'm like, I don't want it to get to a point where, because like the, the project was supposed to be over by the, like a week before finals week, and mine was not. Like the written work was done, but all of the, like my living room was literally packed with snacks. So I was like, I don't know what I should do with this. Like I'm still preparing for the finals, I just don't have enough anything to get this done efficiently. And she was like, as long as you're gonna stay in contact with DCF and you're not just gonna like bail on them and eat all those snacks, then continue making them. But honestly, it got to a point where there were so many that I was just, I emailed one of the directors and I was like, is it okay if I just drop all of these off? And like you kind of use them as you, as you'd like to because there's so many more. So over two hundred, I'd say at least three hundred, but I've counted like two hundred and fifty. So.
I'll let someone else go, but thank you for, for your service and the fabacy for sharing with us tonight. We really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Mr. Agstel.
So the, I mean, the work that DCF does is intense. I mean, this is, you know, serious business, families in tremendous distress. And I'm curious if you had concerns going into it about how you would feel at the end of the day, just kind of like working on an ongoing basis and very intimately with, you know, in these types of distressing situations.
Definitely. My family actually has a connection to DCF. We fostered a little boy in two thousand and thirteen, which kind of made me want to get more involved with this because I saw kind of like both sides now, I've seen both sides. But just seeing like the stress he was in while he was in good care, I was like, wow. Like this is still a lot. And that kind of pushed me to want to make a difference in somebody's life. And since he's not with us anymore, I kind of wanted to do it as like a tribute to him almost, as a way to like connect back to him. So I was definitely nervous because I cry a lot. And I was like, especially having a connection to this, I don't want to go to somebody's house and cry. But I didn't. I was able to push through. It was definitely sad, it was definitely disheartening to hear like all the things that are actually happening. It was tough seeing the kids in person, seeing like a disconnect sometimes between the biological parents and the kids when they spent so much time in somebody else's home. It was difficult to hear the conversations, see some of the living conditions that people are struggling with. But it was definitely rewarding. And a lot of the people in the office told me that, a lot of social work jobs kind of say that, but it definitely is, it's, it's helpful when you help people. And like one of the families, the first family that I actually got to see, they only spoke Spanish. And I'm not fluent, but I can, I can communicate. And the social worker didn't know any Spanish, so like they have to call an interpreter. But the interpreter was really bad, like they couldn't even hear them, like they sounded like this. Like, and it was very direct translations, which isn't helpful when like you're talking about serious situations, like you need to say exactly what the social worker is saying, you need to kind of not jump around things and not have a translation like Google Translate would give you. But like there was a lot of disconnects there. But like I was able to jump in when I saw that the family was really confused and the social workers were really confused. So yes, I was nervous, but I was excited because I knew that, like, believe it or not, like there's things going on right now that DCF's not involved in that they probably should be. So the best you can do is your best, like the most you can do is try. And like the reality is you can never really fix something for somebody, but as long as you go with like the right attitude and give them all of the resources that you know are available, then that's the best that they can really get. So I was nervous, but I pushed through and I made it without crying, so.
Any else? Just thank you, this is fantastic. I appreciate all of your energy and your enthusiasm for it. It is, it is a very important work and, and to be, to be able to find all the, the joy that you're able to find in it and the enthusiasm is really fantastic.
Thank you.
Makes me very happy.
I was, I was gonna say actually very, something very similar to Mr. Turner. This is, this is a fantastic project. I'm really happy that you got this experience. I, when I, my undergrad was in social work, so I, you know, before I went, became a teacher. That's, this is the direction that I thought I was gonna go in. And it can be very difficult, but you would seem to have like such the, the right attitude going into it. So hopefully you pursue it and continue with it. So thank you for sharing.
Can I say one?
Yeah, just more compliments. Amazing project. And by the way, you're a great speaker too. So just explaining this to everyone here, like very impressive. So yeah, I think you have a bright future ahead of yourself.
Thank you.
I have just one more.
Of course.
I, we do a fifty-one A training for people becoming teachers. And then I, so I've met one of the social workers from Framingham. And for, one of the first things she says is, everyone hears DCF and they think we wanna go take kids, but that's not what we're doing. And what you're describing is really servicing families, right? I mean, can you just tell us a tiny bit more? I think that's what everyone thinks and those, those of you in the work are like, that's not always what we're do- I mean, we're very often trying to support families in really difficult situations to provide them with education and support. Was that what you saw in your work there?
Definitely. I actually added this to my poster. I don't know if you guys think it's a mistake and I just wrote it lopsided, but this is supposed to connect families and children with this arrow. I know you're closed off. But I did see a lot of, more trying to connect families and children rather than tear them apart. And I know that, that is a common misconception as well, but it's really rare that a child is pulled from a home, which is good news because that can be really traumatizing. I didn't realize how many services and resources that the state actually has available, some specifically to parents and children who are in this situation that aren't really otherwise available. But in general, like how much support they're really getting is like, it's on. Like their kinship is what they prioritize over unrelated. And if anybody doesn't know, kinship is just somebody who like you're related to. So they would look for, I've written kinship letters. That's one of the other things I did was kind of, they do a family find where they literally find like anybody who is, could be remotely connected to this child and reach out to them saying, hey, like this child is in DCF's custody. Would you be open to having like any form of communication? Have any form of visitation, anything along those lines? Would you be willing to kind of be a part of this child's life again? And so they do really prioritize getting someone that the child is familiar with, the child's comfortable with, to adopt them, foster them. So I did see a lot of connections with children and family. And it was nice to see because a couple times I was able to just do a home visit with just the parents. I didn't realize that they did just parents, no kids. But after a supervised visit, they oftentimes go into the home with just the parents and talk about kind of what went well, what needs to be worked on. And I didn't realize like how much progress like they're really making together. Because it's nice to see, it's nice to see the parents trying to get their kids back. They all have a plan, everyone involved in the kid's life have a plan. And as long as they meet all of their goals, then like the kid's not going to be able to be adopted into another unrelated home or anything like that. So it really is a family-first organization, even though a lot of times people have different ideas or opinions on everything that they do. But they are really trying to get the children back with their families, which is nice.
Well, thank you first for being willing to come and, and present this to us and, and for taking on this internship. I mean, to Mr. Agstel's point, I've also had the occasion to work with DCF in the past and they are, it's intense, but they, they do great work. And so, you know, being willing to go and, and get a social work degree and to continue this work, that, that I think that says a lot about who you are as a person. So thank you for doing this and, and for what you'll obviously continue to do in the future. So really appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can we clap?
Please clap. Yeah. Thank you again. Next up, Sophia Levita and Adrian Moore. Good evening. Thanks for being here with us.
Thanks for having us. Then we also have a slideshow that's going on the screen, which I know it's gonna be hard for you guys to see.
We can see right here, actually.
Oh, that's so cool.
So if it looks like we're not paying attention to you, that's not the case. And there's, I think they left the clicker up there for this.
Yes. For our project, we wrote and illustrated a book that you can see in front of you. It's called The Zoo Tastic Band. And then with this book, we also taught lessons to preschool and kindergarten classes. And we have some examples of those, which we'll pass around during this, just so you can see them. But like, we'll do that later.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. This is just our slideshow that we use to like present to the.
The board of teachers.
Yeah, so some of it we're gonna have to skip through because we didn't make an organized one for this.
So basically, we just said what's on this slide. But we went into different classrooms. We went into the Malden Early Learning Center, which is where my mom teaches in a preschool classroom. And we went into three different classrooms there. We went into my mom's class twice because she teaches an AM and a PM classroom. And then we went into another teacher, Miss Danielle's class. And then Miss Marina, who is also the choreographer at the drama club. We went to her classroom as well. And then we also went into the Wildwood, which is in the middle school. We went into three different kindergarten rooms there as well.
Went to Mrs. Stanford, Miss Quinn and.
Miss.
McDonough, yes. So that's just the synopsis that's on the back of our book here. Says Gloria Percy, Elijah and Toby live in the zoo. They all love to play music but never thought of becoming a band until another animal suggested they should. With some support from her fellow band members, Gloria builds the courage to perform and they have the time of their lives. So yeah, basically the four animals play music at night.
Yeah.
Premise, that's just how we managed our time.
Yeah, it was basically just creating the concept, illustrating the book.
Yeah.
And then working with each other to make sure everything was clear and concise. And then getting the book printed, making the puppets in the theater.
Yeah.
Reprinting the book, binding it.
Yeah.
Practicing the lesson plan, practicing like the puppet show, and then going into classrooms.
Yeah.
So these are the lessons plans that we went into the classrooms with. We have two different ones because one is for the preschool and the kindergarten, but they're both basically have the same things on it. It's just modified a little differently. And we created like different learning objectives when they were, students will be able to share their favorite characters, describe what they like about the book and their favorite characters, and then draw a picture.
Yeah. And these are the coloring pages that we made for the kids. We have some that are just like from the characters in the books. And then we also have a little stage where they can make their own animals and write sentences about them. And we like adjusted which classrooms would get which, which coloring pages based on like what the teachers could do. So we're passing those around now.
One of the, we went into two different types of classrooms, or three different types of classrooms.
Yes.
In the preschool, we went into different integrated classrooms. And then we went into a fully specialized classroom, which is where we use the regular coloring pages. And we also showed them some examples as well of our own drawings, just so they knew.
We've got these. Like we made a few examples just so that the kids could get an idea of what they were supposed to do. Some of the kids were able to like write their own sentences, while others could only write like words. For some kids, we wrote the words for them and they told us what to write. But they all got to make their own animals. And actually Sophia's mom made this example for us.
Yes.
We have Oscar the ostrich who plays the triangle, and I love him.
Yeah, so the main idea for like the coloring pages were that the, the children would choose an animal. And then for us, we chose the name based off the first letter of like the animal.
Yeah.
But most of them didn't do that, but.
That was the goal, but they understood enough.
And they all play a different instrument, which they all thought of. And these are some examples from the preschool classrooms.
Yes.
We really liked being able to see how the kids were spelling different instruments.
Yes.
Our favorites were guitar.
And flute.
And flute, a lot of them spelt flute, F-L-O-O-T.
Yep.
Which was our favorite.
Yeah, and then guitar, like G-T-R was a common one. He also had G-I-T-A-R, which was closer, but still not right. And we liked seeing how they sounded it out, but also it was just funny to see it.
These were some of the kindergarten examples.
And some of them, you can see like the sentences are really good. Like the child who drew the flamingo, like this is pinky, she likes to eat fish and she sings. That's a really good sentence from a preschooler. And then you have like, yeah, there you go, there's pinky. But then you have others that's like flute, and we're like, good job.
Yes.
Got the premise. These are just some pictures from the visit. So this was in Miss Marina's class, which was entirely a special education classroom. And I think that one of the best parts about this one was afterward, we were told that our lesson actually helped the kids remember what they were reading. And that was one of like the milestones that Miss Marina was going for, was trying to get the kids to pay more attention and remember more what was happening. And they could tell us like which animal was scared to sing on stage and like which animals helped her. And that was really good to hear.
Yeah. And then there are two pictures in the top corner are us in Miss Stanford's classroom. And then all of the other pictures were in my mom's classroom when we were helping them with their drawings and writing and making sure that they understood what they were doing. This is a little video, but.
That's a, that's a little, that's a little long, but yeah, and then.
Should we keep going?
Do we? I don't know if we need to go through.
You can keep going.
Sure. Okay, okay. So one of the things that we had to talk about at the little expo was what was easy and what was challenging. So the things that were easier for us were like making the storyboard, creating the characters, making the puppets and coming up with the examples for the students. We had a lot of fun drawing these little examples.
Yeah.
They're just so interesting to look at.
And then some things that were challenging was definitely deciding on the concept. It took us a couple days to figure out what we wanted to write because we both had different ideas coming into it.
Yeah.
And I don't think this is what we expected to come out with. And then another thing that was an issue was getting the book printed. So we printed this one off Farms and Noble.
Yeah.
I can pass it around too. And it just came with different like printing lines and like mistakes and like the binding didn't show up right. And so we just weren't happy with it. And so we ended up printing out papers from Staples and Adrian binded the book.
Yeah, so we got like, so we had to reformat all the layout of the book so that we could print it on like, what was the dimensions? It was like eleven by seventeen or whatever.
Yeah.
So that we could stitch it ourselves down the middle. And then it was like, we had to make the cover out of cardboard. And it was just, it was such a process, but the colors came out so much better. And we don't have like the weird margins that that one has.
Yeah. And then another thing that was very challenging was learning how to do the puppet show.
It was so hard.
We made my sister sit through like two runs each. And then one of our friends came over, which was a bad idea for her because she sat through it like ten times.
She was there for multiple hours just watching us do the puppet show.
We weren't holding it far up enough and sometimes it was like too far, you can see our hands.
Yeah, or it's too far back and it's in the shadows.
Yeah, and like the timing, because we had some like sound effects with like their instruments. And so it was a struggle from, for me, learning how to use all the sound effects, but we got it.
Yeah, and then we gave all the animals voices, which was another issue. Because the first few times we ran through the puppet show, we didn't do voices. And then we were like, no, this is boring, we need to do voices. And then remembering which voices to use was an issue. And I know I kept making characters southern that were not southern. And it was a problem.
There's a lot, but definitely came out better than we expected.
Yeah.
Just some highlights of our project was just writing and illustrating the entire book in two weeks because we needed to make sure that within the five weeks that we got it ready and printed so we could have it in time for the classrooms. And then obviously binding the book ourselves when we were unsatisfied, which is the one we order. And then it was also a lot of fun for us to read in the different classrooms and just get to experience different classroom settings.
Yeah.
And seeing all the like different ways the children reacted to the different parts of the story.
Oh yeah, hearing the kids like laugh when there was like a lion in the story and whenever the lion showed up, we roared. And just hearing the kids laugh was so fun, like we didn't expect.
It was so cute.
Yeah, and then.
Just like how these are connected to what we wanna do. I wanna be, I'm an early, wait, I'm gonna major in early childhood education. And so this project has allowed me to like go into classrooms and teach it, to like get a glimpse of what I'll be doing in the future. And also being able to work with these teachers allowed me to like realize how to make a good lesson plan for earlier or for later.
Yeah, and then I still don't know what I'm gonna be doing with my career, but I've always wanted to do something that has to do with art. I've worked with kids before, so it was kind of another way of seeing like if I'd wanna continue doing that. And then I've always loved writing and stuff, so it was fun to come up with a story together.
Yeah.
I think that's.
Yeah, I think that's it, because the rest of it's just the vision of the graduate
Yeah.
for what we had to present.
Yes.
Does anyone have any questions?
Thank you. Questions? First of all, Mr. Turner?
Thank you, this is fantastic. I, I love the story and, and both the story but also the process you guys went through for the creation. The creativity in it is awesome. I can imagine there are a few kindergarten teachers and preschool teachers who might want that book. So I don't know if you, if you can have a, a better success with, with binding it later.
Yeah.
I, I think that's a very cool story and it's, and it's a lot of fun for the kids. So I, I'm very impressed. Yeah, again, with, with all the process you went through and then where you, where you landed with it. That's very cool.
Thank you.
Mr. Agstel?
I loved looking at some of the examples the kids came up with for their, for their animals. I think my, my favorites was one with a snake, that my name is Snake. It was three, with three As. It was a piano player, I'm trying to picture it. Snake playing the piano. And, and then there was another snake that I also enjoyed, which was, my name is Snaky and I like to play the microphone.
Yeah, yes.
As, as an instrument. So I'm, I'm curious what you think that you learned about collaboration? Because I, I think that one of the challenges that you talked about is you had really different. So I'm, I'm curious what you think that you learned about collaboration because I, I think that one of the challenges that you talked about is you had really different ideas at the beginning. And so that's kind of a tough thing when it's like, no, but I, my, my idea is we do it this way. Well, I have an idea, we do it that way. And, you know, how did you kind of work together to find something that you were both happy with and, uh, and make it a project that was both of yours and not just sort of one person's that the other acquiesced to?
Uh, yeah, so when we first started, we had a Google Doc and we just shared different ideas for what we thought the story could be about.
Mm-hmm.
And then we took some time each to go through and write like a fake story for each topic and that's how we narrowed them down.
Yeah.
And we both came up with different ideas for the like stories.
Yeah, we had one idea. It was like a magical garden and a child finds a magic garden in their backyard. And we both like went off and wrote little stories about it and both of us ended up making a really angry fairy that was just yelling at the child and we realized that was not the way to go.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, there was, I know, coming into this, we wanted to do something with like actual children.
Yeah.
But we knew like that would be difficult for her at least because I, I didn't do the drawing. I can't draw. But for her to be able to draw different characters who are also like inclusive and everyone can relate to. And so that's why we think that animals also was better just because they're animals and they're easier.
Yeah, it's, there's so many children's books that use animals or like random, even like objects, just because they're easy for children to like grasp what it is. So using animals was an easy way for us to kind of make it so that any child could pay attention to the story and like find something they liked in it. Because also just kids like animals.
Yeah.
If you put like a penguin in a story that a lot of children like penguins, they're gonna pay more attention than if you just have like some random kid and it's like, well, I don't know this child, why am I gonna listen to the story? But you have a penguin with a keyboard, kids like that. We learned that.
It's one of the favorite characters in the bunch.
Yeah, Percy the Penguin was very popular.
Yes.
Dr. Bryson.
I'd love to know two things. One, when, like, bring me to that point where you decided to do this. Like, what, was that a conversation you had this year? Was it last year? Like, how did that, how did you decide to do this particular project together?
So when we had to start thinking about the projects, me and like a group of people were gonna do something with ceramics, but it didn't really work out for us. And so then this came to mind, for me at least, and I was like, this is, sounds like a really good idea, but I can't draw. So then I texted Adrian.
Yeah.
I was like, do you have an internship or a project?
Yeah.
And then.
Yeah, and I was gonna do an internship at, um, at a chiropractic office, but then like the hours wouldn't line up. I wouldn't be able to get all the hours that I needed. And then I was like, I don't know what to do. And then Sophia texted me and I was like, oh, my goodness, a project. It was just so many things that I couldn't figure out what to do and then Sophia had this great idea with the children's book and it, we were like, perfect, we're doing this.
Yeah, and we met during W two at least.
Yeah.
One or two times.
Yeah.
To come up with our set plan for what we were gonna do.
Mm-hmm.
And we knew that we had to add like a little bit more to the project to make it like fully fit the vision of the graduate.
Yeah.
And so we came up with like the idea to do a lesson plan and then all of a sudden like a puppet show popped up somewhere.
Yeah.
So it was, it was a lot, but.
It, yeah, it started with just a book, then we were like, okay, well, if we're reading it, then we gotta do a lesson with that. And then we're like, well, if we're already doing that, what about a puppet show? And then we made puppets.
Yeah.
Adrian, do you, after being in the classrooms, is that, are you like, ooh?
I might like.
I might like that, yeah.
I've always loved like working with kids. Like, I've been a, a camp counselor a few times and stuff, but I've like never really thought that I wanted to be a teacher. But then after doing that lesson, it was like a lot more fun than I thought it would be, so I don't know. If I don't know what I want to do in the next like few years, I might go down like a teaching path. We'll find out.
You have to come back and let us know?
Yeah.
I know, and, and one, my last question is, I run a reading writing club here in the summer through the rec just for one week. And if you're around, it'd be really, they're young elementary kids, but to come in and be guest authors, they're writing books as well. So it might be neat for you to come in and share your process and then obviously if you could just do it, you know, the whole, the whole shebang, puppet show, like, I'm sure Christine's like, I'll come. We're a little bit like, we want to see more of this, so, um, I'll send you an email if you're interested.
Yeah, definitely.
I think you could take your show on the road and you should just kind of tour around the different schools and let kids learn from people who have done this work. You know, there are a lot of kids out there who also want to be writers, so I think looking at you do that is just awesome and very cool, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, can I ask, I'm curious why you decided to do this presentation this way rather than just performing a puppet show for us? I feel like we, I feel like we missed out.
If you do want to see it, we can definitely send you guys the video of us doing it.
Oh, yes.
Because we have multiple videos.
Yes, we do.
And we were talking earlier, we were like, do we bring the puppet theater? Because we weren't sure like what the setup was gonna be and we opted out.
Yeah.
But now we realize that we should have brought it.
Yeah, I mean, we have the puppets, but not the theater.
Yes, you have the puppets in my bag.
Yeah.
Thank you. I, I, it, again, great, uh, great presentation, great project. It's, it's wonderful to see that you guys were able to both connect together to do this, but also to, you know, connect with younger kids and hopefully maybe you can present it, Dr. Bryson's workshop. I mean, I think there's any number of things that could sort of offshoot from this, so this is great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
That was awesome.
Two thi- two things before we move on, uh, as we have said in the past, you are welcome to stay for the meeting. We won't be offended if you choose to leave or go do something else. And Mr. Gendron is here. Not to put you on the spot, but if you want to say anything, I know.
Yeah, thank you. I mean, it's a tough act to follow. They did a great job. Um, and so many other students did a great job too. Um, so thank you for presenting. But part of the challenge is always in a limited timeframe to give you a sampling of what the students were working on. So many students had a similar impact on the community and other people, uh, and their future career pi- plans during the senior exploration project. Uh, and one of the things that I think it's important to always, uh, remind ourselves, uh, including people, uh, if there are people out there who don't have a lot of high school experience, the fourth quarter for a high school student in a more traditional setting, sitting in a classroom in those final weeks. Um, I think everyone's heard of this phrase, senioritis, um, but to like live it is not a terribly productive time in schools. And so instead to do this kind of forward-thinking process where we kind of get out of the way and let them pursue their passions and their ideas and their creativity, we end up with like these incredible, beautiful learning experiences. Um, and I think what stands out to me and the teachers and administrators who, uh, hear kind of, well, I guess walk along the process with them, but then see the end result is like so many people are like, well, I still want to tweak this and figure this out and they're working, these people are graduated and they're still like excited about their work. Uh, the number of connections to future employment, future opportunities, like we just saw tonight, uh, are endless. And it's like a really important aspect, I think, of Wilmington Public Schools. And so thank you all for giving us a little bit of a platform to showcase that. Um, encourage community members, uh, school committee members to attend the expo. I know we saw a number of you there. Uh, attend the project presentations because I think it is like the pinnacle capstone of their K to twelve experience. Um, and super grateful that the community and the school committee and the administration support what is, um, you know, not something that every school does. But hopefully that's a feather in our cap, uh, and something that we continue to do well. So thanks.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. All right, moving along. We have approval of items by consensus. If there's no, uh, no disagreement, we'll do this in one, one large swing as we've done in the past. Uh, so we have approval of minutes, May twenty second, twenty twenty four. Approval of second read policies, I G A, I G D, I H A M, F A, F F, F F A. Removal of policies, I G B H, I H A I, F A E and F B. Warrants, G thirty six, thirty seven, thirty eight, R sixty four, sixty five, sixty six, sixty seven, sixty eight, sixty nine. L one hundred through one eleven. F S sixty seven, sixty eight, sixty nine, seventy, seventy one. C B thirty one, thirty two, thirty three. Special education, sixty one, sixty two, sixty three, sixty four, sixty five, sixty six. Payroll, six five, twenty twenty four, and the approval of food services equipment request. Do I have a motion? Dr. Bryson. Second, Mr. Turner. Questions, discussion? Dr. McCauley.
I would love to do this in one fell swoop, but I wasn't here for the meeting minutes. So I could just abstain on everything if easier.
So. I mean, we could amend the motion.
Okay.
Take the minutes out since you're here.
Okay. So.
So it would be in favor of everything.
I move to amend the motion to exclude approval of the minutes.
There it is.
Second.
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 Okay. All in favor of the amended motion? Okay, that's unanimous. Then I would need a motion for approval of minutes, May twenty second, twenty twenty four.
Actually, I think we approved to amend the motion, but we still need to vote on the motion.
Okay. So, okay, so I think, no, I think you're right. So we, okay, we approved the amended motion. So now all those in favor of approving essentially, uh, items B through D. Okay, that is unanimous. Now we need a motion for approval of minutes, May twenty second, twenty twenty four. Uh, Dr. Bryson, second, Mr. Samaha, all in favor and one abstention.
Yep. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry.
Sorry for the confusion. All right. That brings us to superintendent's report. Dr. Brand.
Thank you, uh, again, and good evening. Just one item tonight under, uh, the report. Um, as we have continued to try and, uh, draw attention to the amazing things that are happening, uh, throughout the school system and to celebrate, uh, celebrate the good, uh, it's timely with, um, uh, drawing attention briefly to our graduating class of twenty twenty four, which we obviously had the privilege just to see a, a few moments ago. As we've done over the cu- uh, past, uh, couple of years, following graduation, we tried to compile in a, in a very succinct way, um, a good news announcement to share with the community and, um, really highlight, um, some of the key accomplishments of our class of twenty twenty four. I first want to start though by extending a, a huge thank you to Mr. Gendron, the leadership team at the high school and his staff for, uh, again, planning and coordinating an awesome day. Uh, the weather was perfect. Um, thank you to the school committee for being in attendance to support, uh, a nice send off to the class of twenty twenty four. Um, the, uh, future college student athletes, which I've been drawing attention to. Uh, there are thirteen of our current, uh, or our senior class graduating that are going on to continue to compete at the collegiate level. Um, they include in, um, a number of sports, uh, including wrestling, baseball, lacrosse, soccer, swimming, football, track and field, dance, softball, vo- and volleyball. Um, so, uh, a huge, uh, uh, foot forward, so to speak, in terms of, um, our student athletes who have had the opportunity to compete here and represent the high school and will continue, um, in their athletic endeavors. Special awards are also, uh, worthy of, of noting, in particular, as we continue to, uh, take immense pride in our world languages program and the opportunities that are bolstering our students, uh, in, uh, second and sometimes beyond third languages. Um, thirty two total biliteracy awards to call out and including seventeen SEAL of biliteracy awards. And that's particularly to note the exceptional ability of our students who have demonstrated their proficiency and to be a part of a language of culture beyond English. And in terms of college bound, uh, we have a huge number of students that are heading off to post-secondary education. Uh, were admitted to or accepted to a hundred and eighty-eight schools and have chosen sixty-four to attend, and this is a long list of the many that span, uh, the country, private schools, public schools, large schools, small schools, uh, a great array of, um, representation of Wilmington students in these institutions. Um, also certainly worthy to note, fifteen students will be future teachers and educators who have identified their path forward to pursue a career in the profession of education. Two students are enlisted in the arms force, are enlisting, I'm sorry, in the armed forces and seven students are planning to enter a trade industry. So we couldn't be prouder of, uh, the, uh, uh, accomplishments of these students. And this, um, this flyer, if you will, is going to be, uh, pushed out to the community tomorrow. So, um, thank you for the opportunity to bring some attention to that.
Very good. Thank you. Questions? Okay. Next on the agenda is public comment. There were no public comments. There were no members of the public who signed up for public comment and guessing there's no members of the public. Okay. Moving along. To new business. Uh, first item of new business is the Wilmington High School handbook. Mr. Gendron, you are back.
Right, great.
Good evening and thank you. And as Dr. Brand just said, uh, thank you and congratulations for another successful year. Great graduation. Uh, it was a great day.
Yeah, it was fantastic. Um, and it was my first time, uh, with the outdoor graduation, uh, which was a lot of fun.
That's right.
Um, so I provided in advance of the meeting, um, a memo with the summary of the changes to the high school yearbook. Student handbook, excuse me. Um, I think the most notable change is to update language regarding, uh, the new schedule, which will implement, um, this upcoming school year, which we discussed extensively throughout the year. Um, so making sure that references to the old schedule and old, um, shortened day schedules and those kinds of things are cleaned up. Um, additionally, with the graduation requirements, there were some, uh, credit total, um, updates that were reflected in the program of studies that also appear in the handbook. Um, so aiming for consistency there. We added the course level expectations chart also from, uh, the program of studies and copied that information into the homework length section. The food service team, um, asked us to update the lunch prices, thanks to the state providing, uh, free lunch for all students. Health service asked us to ref- remove reference to SARS-CoV-two, uh, from the disease chart. Um, and then, uh, more wording updates the locker section. Uh, we just adjusted for tone. Uh, students' rights and responsibilities. Uh, W two is no longer referring to, uh, the, uh, flexible time period. W two will now be an academic block, so we refer to the, um, it's, it's been called many things interdisciplinary block. W two, uh, it'll be referred to as flex block in the next schedule, referring to the flexible use of that time. Uh, we also included language, uh, regarding My Flex Learning. That's a scheduling program that's specific to that flex block that allows teachers, uh, and students to pre-schedule themselves to the locations that they'll be for that time. Uh, and then finally, we updated the clubs and extracurricular activities section. There were some, uh, clubs that have gone inactive, some new clubs that have come to be. Um, and some clubs that the name has changed. Uh, for example, Club W H S is now the W H S Service Learning Club. Uh, the Drama Club, we refer to as the Lamp Lighters Guild. Inadvertently, we crossed out lamp lighters when we added it, so, uh, I hope I did not cause undue alarm. We still have lamp lighters. Uh, they're setting records, uh, in the theater, so they are not going anywhere. Um, but, uh, that was an error in the packet. Also, since then, um, the, uh, transportation department published, uh, bus expectations, um, and so we linked that. Um, but that wasn't up to date in the document. Uh, and there were a couple other typos, uh, and wordings that were, um, noticed. Um, so thanks to the folks who helped pick those up, um, those will be, uh, updated, uh, but weren't in the redline version. And so that's like a short, uh, summary of the changes. I'm happy to elaborate on any that there are questions about.
Questions? Mr. Samaha.
Um, yeah, I had, um, well, one, just one thing that I noticed on, on page eight. Um, it says class of twenty twenty four and twenty five. Probably don't need twenty four on there anymore.
Yep.
Um, and then, uh, one of my, I had another question about, um, uh, right around page forty-four is the academic integrity. And I, I wondered if there has been any discussion of adding any language around A I.
Good point. So we'll screen for twenty twenty four references. I think our goal is to get this handbook to a point where it doesn't have specific references to grades, but with some of the changes and credit things. So thank you for catching that.
Yep.
Uh, for academic integrity, uh, the Office of Informational Technology and our high school-based, uh, um, tech integration specialist, uh, Miskatch, uh, have worked a lot on A I with teachers. Uh, they have, uh, a existing policy, um, that we can, um, look at inserting or referring to and linking here. Um, so that's a great suggestion, um, that can be easily done because the work has already happened and the document already exists and it makes a lot of sense for it to live here.
Mr. Rexel.
Uh, I have a.
I have a pedantic correction to make in what else but the MCAS section. On page nine, there are tables that describe the various passing scores needed to earn the competency determination. There are four references to STE that can be changed to science because there is no more TE at the high school level since the technology education test was phased out.
Okay.
Yep, perfect.
That can just say, uh, high school science.
Yep.
Okay.
Thank you for that.
Mr. Turner.
Just a quick one. On page six, as they're numbered in the document, it does talk about the schedule and, you know, decisions may be made to rotate summer or all blocks. I know generally the one through floor, one and four always flip back and forth. I don't know if that's needed in the handbook, but it is a detail of the schedule that is pretty regular, so.
You mean in describing?
In describing the fact that it's blue, yeah, the fact that from one day to one blue day to the next day, that flip happens. I don't know if that's necessary. And then the other thing is I'm very curious how long it will take people in the building to stop calling it W-two and start calling it flex block.
Yeah, that's, that's great. We can take predictions. Hopefully, it might take the, you know, the incoming eighth graders to go through, but that's a great question. We can elaborate what that flip entails. It's in there as like a slash, but that's not self-evident, so we can explain that a little bit better.
Dr. McCallie.
I just have one question and not advocating any change, but just kind of more for learning because we have the opportunity here. So I read about the electronic devices policy in there. Just kind of curious how that's working in the high school. You know, are kind of the, you know, cell phones and everything causing disruptions on day-to-day learning at all? Do you feel that that policy there is enough or maybe that needs to be discussed a little bit more at a future date?
Yeah, I think the classroom management has been great around specifically cell phones. Teachers use really two approaches. The first is that they establish routines where students come in the room, they put up their cellphone in either like a door sleeve or a phone cubby. Those routines get established early in the year. They're consistent. They don't result in a whole lot of difficulty. I think students, whether they articulate it or not, in those classrooms benefit from real clear-cut expectations about put your phone away, we're going to get to learning. There are times where they will retrieve the phones if it's like they're using some kind of response system that uses a phone or other reasons. I think there are other educators who don't have them put up in the same way and prefer to create the expectation that they're out of sight, out of mind, and address any incidents that arise or if they see one out, remind the student to put it away. Typically, when they take that approach, they talk about preparing students for the real world where there might not be a phone cubby or a phone sleeve to physically separate themselves from the phone and the importance of developing those skills. In both cases, the educators typically pick the style that works best for their classroom, and very rarely do like administrators need to come reinforce the expectations. It happens occasionally, so I wouldn't want to misrepresent that, but I don't think, I don't think from my perspective, the phones are causing significant disruption in the schools.
All right, great. Thank you.
I just have a comment.
Please.
W-two is going to be hard for me to let go. I've lived it for four years, but I'm excited about the change, and I think that, well, we all are pretty supportive of the new schedule, so I'm really excited about that. I also just want to compliment you and your team on sort of the changes in W-two over the years. So I've seen it now sort of like when it was less structured and how you've built in that structure, and I think that student, I thought there might be a little bit of like a revolt or something, but I, students seem to be really receptive to that. And it's one way, I think, where kids are really getting what they need and teachers are really in tune, not that they weren't before, but, you know, knowing, oh, I have to go here during the first half. What do they call it, W-two? What is it like?
Yeah, we split into A and B.
Yeah. So W-two A, I go here, and then W-two B, I get to go to this, you know, performance, or I get to go. And I just feel like it's a nice way to give them independence, right, where they have like these choices, but there's also someone, an advisor, or someone who's helping some of our students kind of figure out what would be the best use of my time in that particular block. So I think moving forward, it's going to be even, even better. And obviously with the issue of when you have your W-two and it is booked for you, you don't always have opportunities to do other sorts of electives or other things. So now I think it's going to be just much more equitable for all kids. So just a compliment because I think, you know, probably Jiang and I have seen like the transition over the years, and it's, it's really exciting to see that progress. So thank you for that.
Thank you for that feedback.
It's going to take me a bit. It's going to take me a bit, but I will, I will be on board.
Five years, yeah, probably.
Honestly, my son is a seventh going into eighth grader, and he's probably the first, like, graduating class that won't refer to this. So you've got a ways to go, so get ready for that. My only question was going to be about the lamp lighters, so thank you for addressing that at the beginning. I think most of us had that question too, so. Anybody else?
I do have one more. I'm sorry, just one last question.
By all means.
Because you are changing the credits, obviously there'll be sort of like a, we refer to it as like a teach-out, so students who are in, how, is that managed well? Like, so my son just finished freshman year, so he obviously finished with thirty, not thirty-five. Will that be pretty seamless for kids who are already in this, in the high school, or do you foresee any sort of like hiccups along the way?
Yeah, it will. They have built into like by the end of senior year, the total credits that are required is not based on passing every class of every grade. So there's a built-in buffer so that, you know, a student fails one elective class, they're not going to be retained. And so like I think there's the space there, and that was where on the program of studies, we wrote out, you know, for every single grade, how many credits they need to tally to. And the school counselors were like really helpful in that. They spend a lot more time like really in the specifics of credit totals and stress points on where a student might be at risk of retention, and they help design those thresholds. So, you know, I don't want to have any false promises, but it's not something that we anticipate will like create additional stress on student credit totals.
Great, thank you.
Mr. Agstel.
At the beginning of this year, both, I mean, district-wide, really honestly statewide, but definitely also like the freshman orientation, there was an emphasis on attendance that, you know, that a lot of people have been concerned about school attendance and just chronic absenteeism. How did you feel that that went this year? Because there don't seem to be any changes as far as the handbook go to sort of how absences are handled and make-ups and attendance policy. And so I was just curious how you thought things went this year as far as our attendance.
I think it went pretty well. For not like the protocol reasons that are in the handbook, the protocols remain the protocols. But as you know, MTSS has been like an area of focus for our school, and so we thought about for students who we identify attendance concerns, well, like what are our interventions? And so we developed like in-house interventions that really amount to like a strategic system of automated calls, like human calls, human letters, and so like a system of responses as absence numbers increased. And the interactions become more and more personalized to a student and the family. And so I'd say those have positively impacted our attendance numbers the most, even though they're not necessarily part of the attendance protocols. But I would say our attendance has improved, and as our attendance has improved, and this was part of like my goals for the year, as our attendance improved, our building-wide social-emotional data improved via panorama. Our academic performance improved via the internal grades and external grades. Our behavioral data improved, you know, in terms of number of incidents. And while it, I can't say it's causal because attendance improved, all these things improved, I think it's an interesting correlation to note that as attendance improved, some of these other indicators improved too.
Yeah, I could also see that going the other direction as well, that as kids are succeeding more academically and they're feeling more confident in the social-emotional realm, that that also has a positive effect on school attendance as well.
Yeah, absolutely.
Just regarding the attendance, and thank you for raising that, just as a reminder, the strategic plan update that we provided pointed to the fact that we, the leadership team, will continue to be taking a look at attendance and our procedures over the summer. I suspect there'll be a request to meet at some point with the policy subcommittee, and so it's possible that there's a modification going forward to, to attendance procedures that may, may certainly intersect with the high school and middle school handbook. So that's still a work in progress, but we didn't want to hold the whole handbook up because of that possibility. We think it's important for lots of reasons to have you hopefully approve the handbook before we go into summer recess, but the attendance piece is one that we'll continue to be talking about and could very well be back here in the fall. That wouldn't be unprecedented to have a section of the handbook that would be, you know, superseded by or overwritten by something that evolves that's happened on occasion in the past. And if that was to happen, we would certainly draw all kinds of attention to that with our families and students going forward.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
See you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Roll cats.
Roll cats. I think you almost had every speaker.
I know.
Almost every speaker. Not all of them, but almost.
It will be every speaker.
Once we stop referring to it as W-two, right, then everybody will. All right, next up is the middle school handbook. Dr. Quirk. Good evening. You had a busy day over there today. I stopped by. It was seventh grade field day, and the North was there for their fifth grade, moving up to sixth grade ceremony, so.
And we were recovering from the eighth grade aloha party last night, so.
And a bit of an event tomorrow night.
And then the moving on ceremony tomorrow night.
All right. And the weather looks good, so fingers crossed.
So thankful. It's always, last week I started looking at the weather, and on Tuesday, I think it was, there was a day where it was going to rain every day this week, and I was a little worried, but no worries. We're good. Maybe Friday, which is a non-event day, except it's the last day. So I had also provided a memo in regards to the handbook. You know, besides some of the typical changes of updating, you know, staff changes and things of that nature, I did update the cover. I thought that adding more pictures of our students and staff would be important. Updated school committee members, the, we, each year, the principals and assistant principals have provide a message at the front of the handbook, so we, the three of us updated that. We updated some staff names and emails in regards to the team leader position. Some, those have not been finalized, those stipends, but will be shortly, so as soon as those are updated, I will be adding those, the staff listing. It's a graphic that I've used in the past that is the listing that we use internally. There are some symbols there. I know that it was brought up as a question. They, they basically refer to staff that might have some sort of, they might be a team leader, or they could be safety care trained, or, or, you know, some internal notion. But we, I will clean up that graphic for the handbook as it's, is something internal and use that. I updated the school calendar and the academic calendars and the quarters and other important dates, besides fixing a couple of typos here and there. I enhanced the description of the parent advisory council, the PAC, and the school advisory council. I thought it was important so that people knew what those two groups were doing and working, how they were working with the middle school. We use a blue and white day schedule, so I updated the six-day cycle as that, so that we can refer to that. I did update on page forty-four some of the arrival pieces, which I know there was a question too on, you know, when students can come into the building. You know, when we had COVID, we had the students that are waiting outside. Prior, my first year here, I had students arriving at the school earlier than I did, at like six fifteen in the morning. So it took a while to kind of get to that point of coming more closer to the arrival time. You know, staff arrive at a certain time, and some, and the buses do come a little earlier than that, so arranging for staff. We will be pivoting a little earlier than we did this year. I'm thinking, you know, more, I'll be looking at the weather, looking at more, and, you know, November-ish to maybe April where we'll be coming inside. We did see some trends when that, when we did do that this year, where people started creeping in even earlier and earlier, right? So which then caused kids to be outside, you know, even though I had staff ready, there was still, at a certain point, which was earlier, parents and kids were getting there even earlier. And some students still like to stay outside. It does limit the amount of staff that are outside as well when we pull some things inside. So we, we will be doing that sort of trends when it gets colder, but then when there's extreme weather, what was meant there is, you know, if there's a day outside of that window, when we have staff and students coming inside, that might be for a wind chill factor reason or an extremely hard raining day, we'll pivot temporarily. I mean, I, I'm, I'm doing one of the doors. I'm at the explorer door personally, right? I do like that time with certain students as we're waiting to come in. They seem to like being outside as well, seeing, hanging with friends. The students also like to be inside a little bit to see friends as well. So, you know, we're just trying to work through staff and trying to get students in as quickly as possible. I updated the lunch here, and then there was a little clarification with the bus code of conduct. Originally, it was written where, you know, warning was like the first offense and, and so on, but sometimes first offenses don't warrant a warning, right? So I just worded it to be a little bit more flexible there, that, you know, depending upon the level of, of, of the offense, you know, type of thing, that would, to provide us that flexibility. Just want to make sure I'm covering everything. I think I am. Talked about the graphic. Cell phones, I know that was a question too. So we, we, you know, tell students that they're not allowed in the building. Students bring them. So I, when I do my morning announcements every morning on Mondays, I do remind students that they're not to be seen or heard. I'd say the biggest thing is not really the cell phones anymore, even though it's a part of it. It's the earbuds. They can easily be tucked in someone's ear, behind someone's hair. We would never know. You know, I've looked into different things that we could use. There's a company called Yonder that you can get these pouches. They're very expensive. You know, it, it does cut off the cellphone, right, but allows a student to carry their phone. And then they magnetically, they have to touch a magnet to be released, right? You know, teachers, I would say overall, they don't necessarily collect them, but they do help with managing them. I would say one of the biggest things that we have issues with, you know, it's a different age too, so parents want connections with their children too, right? I would say we get a lot of, you know, there's texting or calling home when they're not feeling well, rather than going to a nurse, has been an issue that we've been trying to address, getting them to meet the nurses and realize that they're a resource, right? But, I mean, I'm not going to say that they're not an issue, but teachers do a great job in managing them. I'd say I had less phones collected in the main office than ever before, so we're definitely doing a better job. And again, it's the earbuds, which they can be, this phone can be in the backpack, and then we would never know that they have their earbuds in, right, type of thing, so. I think I covered everything. If I didn't, I apologize, but I think I did. Any questions?
Questions?
So, Mr. Turner. To that last, so first of all, thank you for all the updates and all the highlights of the changes and such things. Certainly, I appreciate the cellphone topic. I, I think we should, not tonight, but over the course of the next year, revisit that. Starting with the sentence, students should not bring their cell phones to school is pretty much the point where most people will stop reading it because they know students are bringing their, I mean, the parents are giving the kids the phones, and so if we don't come up with a different way of approaching it, it puts teachers and parents in a weird spot to begin with. And so I appreciate that you're done research, and I'm not suggesting tonight we need to address it at all, but I do think longer term, having some different sort of view on how we handle them. And I, I do get the sense that there's a difference for kids in fourth and fifth grade with cell phones, where they're with the one teacher all day, and kids in high school where they're a little bit more mature, a little bit more used to them, and some of the novelty has worn off. them, and some of the novelty has worn off, that sixth through eighth grades is kind of the spot where it's the most potential for being a challenge. And that's the nature of the kids and the nature of the change of schedule and all those sorts of things. And so it's just kind of a part and parcel of middle school. And so how we address that, and again, my understanding is that across the school, some of the teachers have effectively no problem, and some of the teachers have a little bit more of a challenge with it.
I would agree.
I think doing the things to help the kids be focused on learning and also have the teachers not have to be focused on whether or not the kids are using their phones. And so it creates a burden on them, and it also disrupts the learning. And so whatever the solution is, I don't have that in mind tonight. Thinking more about that over the course of the year, I think is something we really should try and address to help the overall environment at the middle school.
If I can, really quick. I think it's an excellent point and an excellent suggestion. And I think that the reality, and I think you're right to the extent that perhaps of all the ages, undoubtedly, it would be at the middle school level. And this would not be held true just in Wilmington. This would be anywhere. But I think that we can recognize this continues to be a very important topic. I was just saying, I think, to Christine earlier today about the headlines that we're seeing. We're seeing more and more districts talking about this, not just the Commonwealth, across the country. This is certainly, though, no easy thing to tackle with the placement, so to speak, of where phones are as a tool, as a device, whatever you want to call it. Changing direction somehow is certainly needs to warrant a larger conversation, and I would appreciate, I think, and I can't speak for Dr. Quirk, but I'm sure, to have that conversation on a wider level. There are a lot of implications beyond just their presence and interactions with or interference with teaching and learning. And we see that manifest and play itself out when there's an issue that happens in a school. Before we can even contend with it or deal with it, there are community members on the doorstep. And that's... So anyway, we could talk at much greater length, and I appreciate it. Not tonight, but it certainly would be something that I would welcome.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks to Dr. Brand. I am part of a principal group where there's a ton of us that meet monthly. And this was recently one of the conversations that came up. One of them is using that program that I mentioned earlier. He had received a lot of pushback for implementing it for a variety of reasons, more from the parents wanting to... The biggest thing is in the case of an emergency, how can I contact my child, right? So I have examples and colleagues that I can refer to on how they've addressed it as well. And I could definitely bring in the teachers and work on that this fall.
Awesome. Thank you.
I did remember a point that I did not bring up earlier, so I apologize. It was referenced about the mission and vision statements of the middle school. To remind everyone, they were redone a couple of years ago when we had AMLE come to talk about our schedule. And it was a product of the three days that we had the consultant here that helped us go through our data in regards to our academic data, our attendance, which came up with how we implemented when, which I know we're coming back to talk about our MTSS program at a later date. I don't think it's a bad idea that every couple of years that we revisit the mission and vision statements, so I'll be working on that with the staff this fall.
Great. Thank you. Anybody else? Dr. McCallough?
So thanks. Yeah, just to thank you for addressing the... Having the students come in a little bit earlier during, I think it was in extreme weather conditions. When you explained it to me, I get it. It makes sense. Just wondering if you want to put that in writing or codify that, because I did ask that question. It's like your definition of extreme could be different than my definition. It could be different than someone else's, and it could cause some churn potentially.
I will update the wording. Thank you.
Okay, yeah. No problem.
Thank you. I think one thing, somebody had pointed out to me, and Dr. Quirk, I imagine they pointed it out to you, but Mr. Ragsdale's name was left off the list of school committee members.
I am very apologetic for that.
But I think everything else I had was covered, so. Anybody else?
Yes, thank you. So these collectively, the high school and middle school handbook are here for, as you note in the agenda, the first read, with the hope that we can move forward to the June 26 meeting. It is for a second read and approval. They are important documents. Appreciate your comments and your feedback and your questions. They are the best foot forward to codify, to capture, obviously, the expectations and goals and so on of our respective secondary schools. So thank you for your time, and I think it bodes well to have the committee approving both. Although, the high school handbook, as we've talked about before, really is the only one technically that you need to approve. I think the place that we're at with including the middle school makes a lot of sense. Thanks, Dr. Quirk.
Thanks to you both.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. The next up is old business superintendent evaluation. I guess that's me. So over the course of the last few weeks, the individual members of the committee have used the review form to provide feedback on Dr. Brand for his performance this past year. The subcommittee, Dr. Bryson, Dr. McCallough, and myself. Good night, guys. Thank you. Met, discussed, and put together the complete evaluation, which I know you guys are in your packets, and I apologize for getting them a little late to you. But I just wanted to talk through some of the broad points that are in here, and certainly any other comments or questions you folks have at the end. We can do that. But I'll start by saying thank you to everybody for undertaking this and for working on this with us and getting this done, and to Dr. Brand for everything he's done over the past year. Dr. Brand had three goals for this past school year, which you'll note, a student learning goal, which was the middle school program review, and two district improvement goals, the MSBA project and what I called here, the school classroom walkthroughs, though that might be a little off. But the committee rated the program review goal as significant progress made, and both district improvement goals received a met rating. In addition, Dr. Brand was rated in four standards. Instructional leadership, he was rated as proficient, the highlight being his team's focus on data in addition to the educational visioning that took place over the last year. Management and operations, again, proficient, the highlight being consistently delivering a smart, responsible budget that not only the committee but the town can support. Family and community engagement, also proficient. Noted improved communication across the district and engagement with the community specifically around the MSBA project that we're in the midst of. And professional culture, also proficient, the highlight being the formulation, as Dr. Brand noted earlier, of the new strategic plan. So overall, the school committee rates Dr. Brand as proficient for the 2023-2024 school year. As noted in the review, the committee finds that Dr. Brand has satisfactorily performed his duties, both overall and in relation to the performance goals specified in the supporting documents. As one of the longer tenured superintendents in the area, Wilmington has benefited from his solid, consistent leadership and guidance. We're fortunate to have Dr. Brand leading the Wilmington public schools. So Dr. Brand has received or will receive a copy of the full evaluation in addition to all of the individual evaluations, and the evaluation subcommittee will find time to meet with Dr. Brand over the course of the next couple of weeks, talk through the evaluation in detail, and potentially talk about goals for next year. So, Dr. Brand, to you, thank you again for everything you do for the district and the town. I guess I'll open it up to the committee and then to you. Would you want to go first?
Why don't we go with the committee first?
All right. So that was a sort of a 30,000-foot view. If anybody from the committee has additional comments they'd like to make, that would be welcome. Dr. McCallough?
Yeah, so I think one thing, if you read all the feedback and the subcommittee felt strongly about, was I think your leadership of the MSBA project was excellent this year. And I don't think the project would be where it is right now without your leadership. So just want to say thank you for that and great work on that project.
Thank you.
Mr. Ragsdale?
I think one thing that I always kind of like to highlight about the way the superintendent rubric works is to emphasize that proficient is a high standard, that it's not kind of just like, just okay, like just going over the, getting over the border. The way that the rubric describes it as, you know, the expected, in fact, we even have the language in there, proficient practice is understood to be fully satisfactory. This is the rigorous expected level of performance. And so, again, proficient is a high standard, and I think it's important for everyone to understand what the rubric means. The other thing, and the only suggestion that I have for the evaluation as it stands is, at the very end of family and community, so the standard three, family and community engagement. And so, most of the section is quotes from our individual reviews, as is the body, most of the body of the review. But this is on page 10. We might want to fix this. This is page 10 of seven. I don't think that. I don't think that works.
Apparently, it's in update. Yep, go ahead.
So it's actually just the last, basically, last paragraph or sentence, which says that while improvement has been made in several key areas under the standard, based on feedback received, the committee would encourage Dr. Brand to consider a goal or part of a goal for next year to be focused on performance measure, 3C communication. And I don't think that that actually reflects the rest of the evaluation and the actual comments of the committee. I think that the comments are, again, rated proficient in that, including in that specific 3C, and that most of the comments are complimentary of the progress that's been made on the communication front. Although, again, always places to improve. Nothing is so perfect that it's not going to have some room. But I think that, to me, that doesn't reflect especially the suggestion at this point of, you know, before we've actually even gotten to the fall, for him to think about his goals. I think that the suggestion of that being part of or considered a superintendent goal, I think, would be premature at this point. And I would, I think I would make a motion to strike that last paragraph in section three.
Sorry, I was just taking a note. Okay, so we do have a motion. Is there a second? Mrs. Samaha, discussion, please.
So I would, I mean, I think in the subcommittee, so what we're doing here is, in that subcommittee meeting, we are tracking all of the scores across, right, all of the ratings across. And so this, while I don't have the individual ones in front of me, this would have been an area where there would have been something that said needs improvement, and it would have been more than just one. And so although proficient sort of took it, because it was the majority, there were some areas that were rated as needs improvement, and though we didn't focus on that, you didn't pull those out here. And so in the individual ones, what we didn't want to do was ignore that there were two, there were less than four members that had rated something as needs improvement and not put that in here. So I think we may be able to clarify it or maybe pull from those. And I can't recall in this exact moment, like, what it is.
No, I can't either.
There are so many that it's hard for me to say, no, it was this exact thing. But I think that there was a piece related to two-way communication that might have been part of it. And this came up across a few of them. And so we're like, oh, we can't just... It felt like not authentic to be like, okay, great, and everything's fine. It felt like we needed to honor those needs improvement in a way that obviously didn't shift it, but we were honoring some of those other ratings. And Mike, you were on that committee with me as well.
Yeah, so just to clarify, too, on the way the conversation went was using the performance evaluation as also a tool for supporting continuous improvement. So not saying like someone did bad at something, but we can all improve, right? We can all do better, and we do this in our day jobs, too, and everything like that. So one thing we were thinking about was, because we saw some of that feedback, we were like, well, progress has been made. This has come up. This is something that we may want to consider in the future as part of continuous improvement for Dr. Brand. So that's why we put that in there and add that as a suggestion. So a little bit different than I think what's been done in the past, but the way we're kind of viewing this is like, hey, we can use this as a starting point, think about what are the goals for the next year and everything. So I think that clarify maybe a little bit more.
Mr. Turner?
So I, hearing both sides, that I can certainly understand where you're coming from, Mr. Ragsdale and Dr. Bryson and Dr. McCallough. The logic on both sides of that conversation make a lot of sense. The only concern, I think, continuous improvement and communication is something that certainly I can work on, a lot of us can work on. I can appreciate that as a future goal. I do also think about where we are with next year, and the MSBA is not going away, and there are other goals that are, like the DLT walkthrough goal will carry forward. So there may not actually be space in the goals this coming fall for us, another goal related specifically to communication. So I'm not necessarily sure that the wording, at least next year, exactly when it happens, may not be... Part of what I feel like we learned from this year was not trying to set up too ambitious, too much in the goals where it became somewhat problematic, and I'd like to make sure we avoid that next year. So that's where I'm getting with that particular piece of it. I can understand certainly the logic of suggesting it as a future goal. The question is what?
So I have two comments. One, I think if we were going to strike something, I would recommend to go back to the subcommittee to review all of those evaluations. I don't think we, I wouldn't feel comfortable striking it in this moment. So, I mean, obviously, we're going to vote on it, but I would urge you not to accept that, because I'm worried that we're then, sort of, the whole point of having the subcommittee is to do that work. And if you just then come and change these pieces here, it feels like we should at least look at it and then consider it. So I would take it as a consideration, bring it back to the subcommittee, and then we can kind of revamp that. And, yeah, I don't just, and then part of that could be, yeah, should it be next year? I mean, I think part of our conversation, just to pull you into that, was we do this evaluation, we present it, then he does the goals. They seem kind of unrelated to evaluate. We're trying to like, support Glenn in a way that's like, you're going to be, we're going to evaluate you come the end of the year, and you have these incredible goals. And sometimes, this has been now since 2017 for me, there doesn't seem to be a ton of, because this was the feedback, this then led me to... So we're trying to sort of tighten that up a little bit, I think was our conversation in that room. But if people aren't comfortable with that, and you see them as being too discreet, like, this is different. Like, he comes up with his goals, we evaluate, and there's not this sort of like partnership, then I think that's something you need to let us know, and then the subcommittee can kind of play around with that.
Please. I think it's completely fair, as you were saying, to sort of honor the spirit of the, and the numbers of the committee members giving the recommendation and making their ratings. So I think that reflecting that and making that part of the evaluation is absolutely appropriate. I think it was only the specific nature of assigning that to the committee, which I think is not accurate. And then again, sort of proposing it at this stage in the evaluation as a potential goal. But I don't object at all to making those opinions reflected in the evaluation, or having the committee look at that issue again.
Okay. So, okay, so I think that's a point well taken, and we do have a motion, so we'll vote on that. But I think...
I move to postpone indefinitely the motion to strike.
Move to postpone indefinitely?
How about those amendments?
Okay. David moves to postpone his amendment indefinitely, and Mr. Turner seconds. All those in favor?
Not after it's been seconded. You can't withdraw the motion.
Okay. Motion made and seconded, all in favor of...
There's no discussion on the...
No.
That was awesome. Well done. All in favor? Okay, unanimous. So if I'm hearing correctly, we'll take this back to the subcommittee.
And address that piece particularly. Yes, Mr. Turner.
So beyond that piece particularly, are we good with continuing discussion on the main topic at this point?
Well, can I just say one more?
Well, I'm sorry. I shouldn't...
I would say, if there are other things that you would like the subcommittee to review, then I would encourage, as you read through this, to email the subcommittee prior to this meeting, so that maybe we could have then come together. I mean, so, because now here it is out in the public. I mean, so although the subcommittee does that work, it probably would be best, because you have access to it sooner, although you didn't have access to it as soon as we would have liked, obviously. So I understand that. But I'm wondering if there were other things you were like, wanting to wordsmith or change. I don't think that should be done in here. I think that that should be done back to the subcommittee. We'll then go through it and fix it, and then bring you a more polished copy, if that makes sense. So I'll just say that, and now, continue on.
Please. Please.
That said, just general comments, so three things that, that come to mind from my perspective and that kind of highlight different aspects of this last year for, for you, Dr. Brand. The MSBA point that Dr. McCauley already raised was a fantastic example of leadership of yourself, but then when I look at the commentary and the feedback on the financial planning and budgeting process reflects on yourself as well as Mr. Gereo and the process that the team takes to prepare that budget, and so I think that's a fantastic example of, of both your individual leadership, but also the team leadership. And then similarly with the, the data that's now, that's being used more and more, the rollout of the new curriculum reflects on yourself and Ms. Elliott as well. And again, it is part of the team leadership that, that is exhibited by the entire central office, and so I really appreciate those points as, as different places of leadership and different places of the evaluation process that I, I think the district really benefits from your performance as superintendent and the teams, teamwork, um, as a whole. So I, I wanted to highlight all those kind of different pieces of it.
Mr. Samaha?
I just want to say, um, uh, thank you to the subcommittee, um, for this, uh, for this report. Having been on that subcommittee before, I know it can be a, kind of a daunting process to go through all of the evaluations and sort of try to figure out, and I think, um, I think that this evaluation actually reads a, a lot better than maybe some of the evaluations, um, we've done, uh, in the past, so I I just want to acknowledge, I just want to appreciate the subcommittee's work on this, I think it's pretty, um, I think it's pretty, it's pretty thorough. And I think that it accurately reflects Dr. Brand's work in so many different areas, you know, I know, um, you're mentioning one, you're mentioning another. There's just, there's, it's a, you know, school, running a, a school district in, in, you know, in twenty twenty-four is, is a very difficult task. And so I just, uh, appreciate, Dr. Brand, I appreciate your work, your leadership and sort of all, all, you know, all of the aspects that, um, are reflected in this, so thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, last thing I forgot to mention, also the, the, the presentation of the information that we review is fantastic, so thank you to all of you who are involved in. I know, I'm, I'm trying to look around the room in multiple spots, but the, the way the information is organized for us to do the review work, because it is, there's a tremendous amount through the course of the year, um, and so I really, I, I was remiss to not mention that earlier, so I do want to say thank you for how well it is organized. It makes it so much easier to go through. I know. So thank you. Thank you all.
Dr. Brand?
Uh, where, where should I begin?
Little cats?
Roll cats, item ten. Yeah, it, it's another thing that you're asked to do, uh, it's not lost upon me, uh, as a set of volunteers to have to take time to, you know, bring forward thoughts that, um, I appreciate the comments around pulling together the work, uh, or the evidence rather, in and of itself, that's, that, that's a slice, it's a, it's a sliver, um, uh, that, uh, you know, it's also very difficult, I can appreciate when, um, you know, there's, there's, there's only so many aspects of the work that takes place on a minute, hourly, daily, weekly, monthly basis that you are able to see. And a lot of the work obviously happens behind the scenes and you're able to see, uh, some of that manifested through presentations and the work of the team, but, um, you know, at the end of the day, uh, I'm here to serve as your superintendent, your feedback obviously has to guide what it is, uh, in terms of your expectations and communication. There was some discussion around that tonight, I appreciate Mr. Ragsdale, your comment, because in the absence of sort of seeing the more full feedback from other community members, um, I too sort of had questions around that. You know, just as a reminder and maybe it's a foreshadowing where we're going, we, we pulled back, or I pulled back with your approval, uh, a couple of goals related to, to way communication because of sort of bandwidth, um, uh, and such, and so maybe through those possibilities, they can, they can come online, um, but I thank you for, uh, the supportive comments, um, throughout the document, I appreciated. It's, uh, reading a summation is one thing, but reading, you know, direct quotations is, is quite a powerful another thing, so I appreciate, um, all of the work that you put into this, so thank you.
I just want to say, you know, working on this and I, I don't want the community or the committee who isn't, who aren't in that room to think that this is like, we just sit there and like, it really was, it's a process of trying to make sure that Glenn is getting what he needs from us too, so, and I really would love for us to think about the evaluation. He obvi, obviously, Dr. Brand, you're so strong, you're such a good, like we all, but now, but I want to make sure that he's getting what he needs from us and using this as like this partnership document as opposed to okay, now it's the end and now we're just going to go through and like almost where, I mean, I, to think more sort of out of the box and maybe there's a few of us that are just focused on one standard instead of, so we have a better understanding of it, I mean, I think part of the issue is that we don't always understand exactly what it is we're evaluating. So we have to really rely heavily on those documents and we're like, okay, wait, where did he do this, how, did he do that, was it? And I feel like as his tenure, as he's been here longer and things are so smooth and have been from the get-go, but there really should be a place for this not just to be, at the end we tell you that, but kind of a, to serve him and to help him get the work done that he needs to get done for us, so it was sort of an interesting meeting to, to think through not just let's get this done, but huh, how can we use this document to really continue to help him get even better, you know, and I, and I don't know what that looks like, but, you know, we're always all striving as educators to just continually, to improve our practice and if we can serve in that way, I think that would be really beneficial for, for all of us and for the district.
To that point, the summer seminar could, could well have some time dedicated to how we improve this process to make it more to make it more.
Yeah, I will also want to add on to that, that having also been on that committee for the two years previous to this and knowing how challenging it is to take seven disparate individual people and their voices and thoughts and yet realize that we have to sum this up into one evaluation that represents the committee and is sort of like the official evaluation, that it's a really, it's a really hard task and, I mean, I think it's, I think it's made easier by that we are generally in agreement, like we don't have crazy agreements where, you know, we're seeing just completely opposite, opposite things. We're not, we're not seeing, you know, giant polarization in the opinions of the committee, but, you know, even people that are largely in agreement are going to have different areas of emphasis and point to different, uh, bits of, uh, evidence that, that they think kind of best, uh, show the, um, you know, show the, uh, what they're trying to show in the standards, uh, so it's, uh, it's always, it's always a challenging thing and when you look through the, actually, especially when you look through all the focus indicators, even as committee members, when you try to like parse each one, it's just like, my God, this is a lot of detail and individually here, it's like, well, what did I think about whether we ensure the practices reflects high expectations, we're earning the content and quality, it's like, you read through these focus indicators, just like, how does anyone run a school district, how could anyone possibly be able to do all of these things? You know, just these, you know, twenty-five very, very specific or thirty extremely specific and detailed skills, um, that, uh, that you're supposed to have. Um, so this is, this is, you know, it's, it's a difficult process and I think that we've always, you know, we've always had a good collaboration on that subcommittee and I think again this year to really reflect the individual voices and I think it's, I, I like that we include individual comments and quotations from the individual reviews rather than just trying to sort of summarize, you know, we're not throwing everyone's reviews into like ChatGPT and just be like, produce an evaluation summary for me. Sorry, not to throw the idea, the idea to any school committee members in Massachusetts, don't do that. But, uh, but that we, we, we let the individuality come through of people's individual comments um, and also respect the time that they put into, uh, writing their individual evaluations and that at, you know, at the same time, the task is again to unify and create a cohesive, uh, cohesive evaluation, that is in the end is helpful. Again, it's not just meant to be like, kind of like a pat on the back, it's supposed to provide, you know, useful feedback as far as what to do more of, what to try and change a little bit of and, and so forth and, uh, I, I think could always use some more discussion, I agree with Mr. Turner that that might be something for us to, you know, talk about a little bit this summer, but, uh, I think that it's, you know, it's not an easy job, I think the, you know, I think the committee did a good job with it and that we tend to do that.
Thank you. I certainly appreciate all the thoughts and the feedback and I know, you know, we've had other discussions about if we talk about it at the summer session and there was a, a, an additional conversation, I don't remember if it was the subcommittee or if it was earlier, but, you know, we have a, he's not here, but we have a new member who hasn't had a chance to work with Dr. Brand and so do you do it earlier in the year before the committee sort of reorganizes, but then you don't get to the end of the school year, so I do think the process as a whole, um, it certainly warrants some, some conversation, so we'll, I'll keep that on the running list of things for our summer session that is growing. But that's, it, it's good feedback, so, um, I know we've had some discussion about sending this back to the subcommittee, do we, I don't, do we need a motion? Or are we just, I don't think so, right?
Uh, probably not, because we can probably just bring it back, we do, we, we need a motion to accept it, but if we're not ready to do that, I think we can just take no action and just have the subcommittee bring it back to us on the twenty twenty-sixth.
Okay, all right, very good. Thank you, please, no, go ahead, you're all right.
Must be the seat, I don't know what's happening. I just want to say that I feel like we are so, I like that the committee took it so seriously and didn't, I mean, obviously Dr. Brand is more than proficient and we know that, and so we didn't go into going, well, oh my gosh, it's so silly, we'll just, like, I think that people really read it carefully and questioned when they didn't understand things and I, I think that that again is in service of of Glenn as a professional, like making sure that we're not just like, oh, you're so great and everything's so wonderful and we're so happy, like, we're like, you're so proficient and you've been so consistently excellent and we're going to continue to take our jobs really seriously to make sure you're getting what you need, like I think people did a really nice thorough job on that, um, in a pretty short time, so can't wait to talk about this at the retreat, because I think it will be interesting to try and rethink how we do this, maybe it isn't just all of a sudden in May, we're like, uh-oh, like maybe it is more of a continuous process throughout the year, um, where school committee members could have a better understanding as to what these things actually look like, but we'll see. All right, that's it, I'm done.
Okay, moving on. Are there any, well, that was a subcommittee report, I guess technically, any other subcommittee reports this evening? Okay. Any correspondence this evening?
None this evening.
Future school committee dates and other notable items, June thirteenth, tomorrow night, the middle school moving on ceremony at six thirty on the town common. Weather permitting, as we talked about earlier, the weather looks great, so hope to see everybody there. Friday, June fourteenth, the last day of school for the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four school year, it's an early release day and thank you and congratulations to everybody in advance of that. June twenty-fifth, the Wildwood School Building Committee is meeting at six thirty, virtually? June twenty-sixth, thank you Tracy, June twenty-sixth, the last regular session meeting of the school committee for this year, seven PM in this room. August seventeenth, the backpack at school supply giveaway from ten to noon. Here in the high school lobby, there is, um, information in the packet for folks who are watching at home and also on the district website, thank you Tracy. And the first day of the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five school year, August twenty-eighth for grades one and twelve. How do we do, did we miss anything?
July eighth.
July eighth, the school committee will be meeting in a summer session here in this room at time, time to be determined.
TBD?
Is that us?
That's us, yep. And I think that's it, if there's nothing else, I would entertain a motion to adjourn. Mr. Samaha, second? Mr. Ragsdale, all those in favor? And that is unanimous, thank you and good night, everyone.